All right, it's 7 o'clock. And I'd like to call to order the meeting of the San Carlos City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority. Let's rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the ready of your justice.
Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda, either from staff or council members?
No changes from the staff this evening, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any changes? Hearing none, we'll move on to a report from closed session. Mr. Rubens?
There is no report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
And then, public comment, item five. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address the counsel on anything?
We only have one member of the public.
I know. I invited all my friends from the coffee shop to come in, you know, since I was acting mayor tonight, but I don't see them either, so. Next item is item, is that six or eight? What is that?
Six.
Six, can't quite read that. Approval of the consent calendar. Items that are on the consent calendar will be approved as a basket unless somebody wants to pull something out of the basket and have us look at it separately.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through K and Housing Authority Consent Calendar Item L.
Second. Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
Counselmember Collins?
Yes.
Counselmember Johnson?
Yes.
Counselmember Obert?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Grecot?
Yes. Okay. Next item is reports to counsel, for reports to the counsel on the community nonprofit grant program.
Hello, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kristin Flores, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I'm here this evening to give an update on the community nonprofit grant program. As you are aware, the city council supports community groups and individuals who contribute to the development and well-being of the community by budgeting funds each year for the nonprofit grant program. In July of 2016, the city council revised this program and its policies to establish an equitable evaluation process to help determine which program and services to fund. Fiscal year 1617 was our first year of this new program, and we completed the competitive funding cycle in early fall of 2016. The city received six applications, and five were awarded grants for their requested amounts based on the recommendation of the council's nonprofit grant program subcommittee. Out of the $40,000 that the council had budgeted for this program in fiscal year 1617, a total of $35,000 in community projects and programs was funded. An overview of these five awards that were made. $20,000 was provided to Healthy Cities Tutoring to help fund its volunteer-based tutor-mentor program in San Carlos, and this funding helps Healthy Cities recruit, train, and place children in San Carlos schools to help those who are struggling to find academic success. $3,000 was provided to the San Carlos Children's Theater to help support their program and their participation in community events such as hometown days, farmer's market, and the Art and Wine Fair. This funding also helps the theater provide complimentary performances at the community library and local retirement homes. $3,000 was awarded to the Villages of San Mateo County, which is also called the Sequoia Villages. The Sequoia Villages helps older adults have an active, safe, and healthy life as they continue to live in their own homes, and so this funding provided transportation to members when volunteers were unable. It helped with participation in San Carlos Adult Community Center day trips by providing incentives and subsidies, and it also helped provide materials to make safety improvements in members' homes so that they could continue to live in their homes on their own. $3,500 was provided to the Community United Church of San Carlos, and this funding helps create, or has helped create, an American Red Cross Emergency Disaster Shelter at Mahaney Hall, right around the corner, and this disaster shelter would be open to the public if needed in an emergency. And lastly, San Carlos Together was awarded $5,000 to create a mini-grant program to fund projects or programs that promote community building and engagement. And one of the programs that they funded this year was the Master Gardeners planting the large pots along Laurel Street. So you'll see we have a few photos up of those, and you may have noticed them around town. They've been pretty happy here in the recent summer months. So that was our fiscal year 1617 program, and with the arrival of the new fiscal year, we've just completed our latest round of the subcommittee recommending award amounts. Healthy Cities is awarded $19,700 to continue to fund their tutoring and mentoring program. The Museum of San Carlos History is being awarded $10,000 to complete a project where they're bringing old newspaper articles into an online format that will be easily searchable. $5,300 is awarded to the San Carlos Children's Theater to continue to support their programs and community performances. And $5,000 was provided to One Life Counseling Center to continue to support their music and memory program and providing low-cost and no-cost services to the San Carlos community. So moving forward, one of the things that we will be hoping to do sort of in the next cycle year is continuing to promote this program. I think we'll be opening the application period earlier in the late fall of this year and leaving it open until spring of 2018 to sort of maximize the number of applications that we receive and therefore sort of the outreach that counsel can have with the money that they budget. And with that, I will take a breath and answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I just have one. I wasn't here for our budget approval, but I know we have beefed up the program, right? Cameron had that idea of taking some of the money?
Nobody has received that's the PG&E.
Okay, but the question I have is, are we, do you have any forecast of how that, what was approved, will affect the program? Or, and when it might, you know?
So for this program? Yeah, so for this program, council allocated $40,000 in both fiscal year 1617 and 1718. And then I know that council will also be establishing the community endowment program, and so that will be operated separately than this nonprofit grant program.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, thank you, Kristin. I actually just wanted to have a discussion about two items, and that was actually one of them. But let me go with the other one first. You notice, I want to make sure my colleagues are aware, you notice that the pattern of awards that we've granted, in particular, we have the largest recipient of the funding continues to be Healthy Cities Tutoring. Now, we did that because frankly, the total number of requests that we got was just, as you saw, summed up to $40,000. I think we reduced Healthy Cities' request by $300 or something in order to make the numbers work. Bob's, in my recollection, from a number of years ago, was that it, at that time at least, it was the sense of the council that this pot of money, it was sort of intended to be kind of getting started, get things moving type grants, but it was not expected to be an ongoing source of funding.
Seed money.
Seed money, that's the word I'm looking for. So Bob and I, and Jeff can chime in if he thinks I'm mischaracterizing this, but Bob and I felt like, well, we're not going to not hand out the money if we've only got $40,000 worth of requests because we know the council wants to invest that. But I wouldn't mind, and I know Bob wouldn't mind, getting some feedback from folks about, do we still have this, it should be mostly seed money type concept? Or is it okay that we're doing what Bob and I are doing on behalf of the council, which is recommending that if we happen to get requests coming in from the same organizations, and those are the only ones we get, we just keep filling in the money? So I'd just like to get some feedback from my colleagues.
I think Healthy Cities Tutoring is kind of a special case, you know? It was started as a city program, and it has a huge benefit to the community. So, you know, given that times are good for the city, I don't have a problem providing, funding, you know, for operations.
Yeah, I don't either. Not that I have anything against Healthy Cities, I've been a big supporter of theirs, but a lot of these programs are ongoing, they're ongoing programs, they're, they help children in this town or the residents of this town, and I don't have a problem with ongoing funding for programs that are continuing to work well for the community, and as long as, you know, the city's got the capability of doing it. I understand the seed, the seed funding concept, but none of these programs ever really get to the point where they're holding massive fundraisers and are always well-capitalized. So I think that because they are sort of, you know, they're confined by the number of people who live here, we are serving a limited number of people. So I don't have a problem with, you know, maintaining the funding on an ongoing basis until such time as, you know, the program goes away or they don't feel that they need the support.
So a perspective that I'll give on it is that, given the program with the $6 million, when that comes to be, we could look at that as funding of programs where we may want to do it on an ongoing basis from year to year. And then, the program that we have in place right now, the grant funding, we could have a very strong policy of, this is just seed money, and the most you can get is, you know, you could set a time limit, three years or something. And if the money's not used, it rolls over into the next year. And then you may have an applicant that comes along with a very good idea that needs seed money, and you've got it because you've, you know, rolled it over from year to year. And it may create opportunities that we simply don't see right now, that could be out there. So that's possible of another way that we could have staff look at it.
Well, and I appreciate the feedback from everybody, because as I said, I mostly wanted to get a feedback because Bob and I were executing what we had last talked about from some years ago, and times change. The other point I just want to make is really just a heads up, and Kristin touched on this a little bit. One of our biggest challenges, actually oddly enough, is finding enough places to give the money to, which sounds funny, it's kind of like you're handing out free money, but that is a perennial issue, and staff has come up with some ideas they're going to use to try and expand the window of application periods to try and encourage folks. But what I want to, the reason I mention this to the dais is, when the money from the PG&E settlement comes in and we set that up, I think one of the things we're going to have to think about very carefully is, how do we actually, what needs to be done to kind of encourage the use of the money? Okay? Because right now, as you saw, we have $40,300 worth of requests for $40,000. We don't have $140,000 worth of requests. And I don't have an answer for that, I just want to tee it up for people to be thinking about, so when we do have the discussion, we can have a fuller discussion about it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, very good. There's a problem here, I see, with the iPad, it wigs out on you and you have to log back in.
Goes to sleep.
Yeah. So, good training for one, you know, if I ever become mayor, I can, tonight is good training. I didn't know what's going on here. All right, new business item is 8A, is discussion of implementing digital voting. I think Crystal is going to tell us about that.
Good evening, counsel, Krista Moy, City Clerk. So this item is on the agenda for you tonight to discuss implementing digital voting in the council chambers. The city's in the process of implementing our new agenda management system, and staff is interested in proceeding with the system's digital boardroom module in order to electronically manage public comments during the meetings. So with this digital boardroom module, we'll also have the option to have digital voting in the council chambers. So I'd like to show you what digital voting would look like, so you can consider if this is something that you're interested in implementing. As you do now, a motion and a second will be made verbally, and then once council's ready to call the question, you would press the blue button that's on your monitor, located right under the speaker button, and that will toggle over to your private voting screen, which would look like, oop, not that, not that either, which would look like this. So on the left side, you'll see the item that's highlighted, and also it shows on the top. And your monitor is a touchscreen, so you would just touch yes, no, or abstain. And once you make that decision, the other options will fade so that you can clearly see which, which option that you chose, and you would be able to quickly choose another vote if you tapped the wrong one by accident. And from my desktop, I'll be able to see when all the votes are submitted, and I'll end the vote and display the results on the presentation screen. And that'll look like this. The council members who made the motion and the second are noted with the M and the S, and it also shows, shows who voted for and against the item, and then the votes are tallied at the bottom. And the outcome is color-coded to show if, just based on how the, the item was adopted or if it, if it failed. And then at this point, the vote result would be verbally stated. So that's pretty much how digital voting would work for us. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Pretty straightforward.
Cameron?
So, thanks, Crystal, a couple of quick questions. How would, like amendments work, or, you know, other motions that are made that are not specifically tied to an item on the agenda?
So amendments would work pretty much the same way it does now, so you would verbally state the amendment, and I would just make a note of it, and then the look of it would be the same.
So if you could go back to the previous screen, are you, are you going to have a case in which?
For this one?
You'll, it'll say, you know, adopt such and such, but actually that's not what we're voting on?
So the item would be, it's kind of a general description at the top right here that you see, item 8C. The bottom, I believe there was an adopted as amended area, so you would see that, but it wouldn't be very specific in showing exactly what was voted on.
But if, if for instance, on this particular one, somebody proposed an amendment, and we were voting on that amendment before we were even getting to the motion, would it still say, you know, item 8C, adopt, update? What I'm concerned about is a situation in which people who are watching at home, it's not going to come up that often, but in a, you know, contentious debate in which there's like a lot of differing viewpoints, being clear about what the question is, because this feels very templated, and I'm just wondering, do we get ourselves potentially into that situation where it appears that we're voting on something that we're not voting on?
You know, I don't believe that I have the flexibility.
I don't, and I understand exactly what you're saying, in those instances where we have items where there end up being several votes involved or whatnot. I don't think it would be any more or any less confusing to the public than it is now. I think what we would try, try to be doing here at the top is simply describing the item as it's agendized, as opposed to the specific motion, which, you know, there may be a staff recommendation on the motion, but, you know, the council very frequently actually will make some sort of amendment that's involved in what they're actually voting on, and that wouldn't really be reflected in the, on screen, just like it isn't reflected now, other than how the council's described it when the motion's being made.
Okay. I'd be interested to hear what other folks think about that. And then the other question, the staff report suggested that there was, I don't know, eight, seven or $8,000 additional cost. Is that for this module specifically, or is that for the whole suite that includes the, is there an incremental cost for the voting part of it?
No, it's the, just under $8,000 covers the electronic speaking and this digital voting.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, following up a little bit on Cameron's comment, I do think that one of the issues we're going to have to think about here is, Jeff, to your point, it, in one sense, it wouldn't be any more or less vague than sometimes we have been, because we often do things on the fly, and we go, well, we're voting on that thing that Ron said. And everybody goes, yes, we know what Ron said, so that's what we're voting on. But today, that's the only source of information about what we voted on is either the minutes, which haven't come out yet, or it's actually listening to the tape of us talking, so you sort of have to hear the whole discussion. Whereas what this will do is it'll put something up in what appears to be definitive color that says, that's what they voted on, okay? I'm not sure I'm terribly agitated about that, but I could see two suggestions. One is that maybe the titles of the items are as generic as possible, and maybe there's even a footer on the screen that comes up that says, you know, action voted on is the thing that we talked about, not necessarily what's written here, okay?
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I hope you can do it more joyfully than I just did, okay? So I do think that's a legitimate concern. I don't mind experimenting with this, I think it actually, in a sense, it's a, it's a fairer solution. I mean, I've benefited from the fact that my last name happens to come last, except for the mayor, and so I, you know, get to see how other people are voting before I cast my vote, and that would go away here, and that's probably a good thing. It's more fair that way, so.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, the only question I really have is, do you have some feedback from other jurisdictions that have used it, what the positives and negatives of it are, and changes that are made as a result of people's experience?
I do, I did reach out to the other, my counterparts in the county, and I know that San Mateo, City of San Mateo did try this. It didn't work for them mainly because it was, they had some logging in issues, it would time people out, and so that made it difficult for the council to, once the caution was called, for them to have to log in to make their vote. That wouldn't be an issue with the system because it would stay logged in. They also had an issue with internet, this was internet-based for them, and so if they had any Wi-Fi issues, that was an issue. And again, this wouldn't, that wouldn't be an issue for us because this is network-based. I know Redwood City has done this for a number of years, I want to say, and they've said that they're pretty happy with it. Yeah.
The only question I have is, this came up as an agenda item, I'm forgetting why. You know, what's the impetus for looking at this?
This is, it's part of a module we were already planning on buying because we'd like the, the ability for public speakers to be able to register online and have it flow to Crystal and the mayor. But this module is included in that purchase, and there really is no staff basis or recommendation associated with, you know, digital voting for the council. Really has no effect on us, but it has an effect on you and how you operate, so we thought, rather than just, you know, show up one day and say, okay, here's the new system, council, we just ask you, is this something you guys want to try or not? Because we can just keep it turned off and just stay with things the way they are, and, you know, I think the way things are work perfectly fine, so.
Okay, and I don't see this as an action item tonight, so you're just looking for feedback?
Yeah, it's just really for direction, but if the council wanted to make a motion, yeah, then, you know, you could just make a motion, and that would be the direction that the council currently has on this issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I move we implement the Bob Gressili Digital Voting Act. In the council chambers.
Oh, I'll second that. Okay, discussion, any discussion? Okay. Roll call then.
Counselmember Collins?
Yes.
Counselmember Johnson?
Yes.
Counselmember Obert?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Grecot?
No. Happy how we do it. Okay. Our next item is item 8B, consideration of introducing an ordinance, which we'll get to the number later, but for the city, amending our municipal code, Chapter 2.24, commissions to include the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. We're getting...
Hello again.
Ditto presentation.
I know, tonight's the night.
Bye.
All right, so I'm here this evening for council's consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24, commissions to include the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. The city council is responsible for making a number of appointments to city commissions, committees, and boards, and also appointments to several outside organizations. And these outside organizations include the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. So in 2003, the Museum of San Carlos History invited the city to appoint two representatives to its boards, to its board. Per the museum's bylaws, these appointments are for two years and do not have any term limits. The council also appoints a representative to the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees, and this appointment is made for either a two-year or a four-year term and has no term limits. In January of this year, the Museum of San Carlos History updated its bylaws, and in reviewing these new bylaws, it came to staff's attention that the appointments needed to be made current, and that sections of the municipal code should be amended to include these outside organizations where council appoints board members. So to include the Museum of San Carlos History and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control Board of Trustees. So the ordinance that is before council tonight is basically to include the San Carlos History Museum Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees in the municipal, in the municipal code. And basically, what will happen by adding these two boards into the municipal code, and is sort of the heart of this item, is that members will be subject to the same requirements as other council appointees. So this would include things such as residency in San Carlos, appointment by a majority of the council, and a maximum term limit of six years of service unless otherwise specified in the code. So this change to the code this evening requires council to introduce the ordinance tonight and then adopt the ordinance amendments at the second meeting in August. After the language is codified, staff would return with a request to appoint members to the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and ensure that their appointments are current and meet the established term limits that are outlined in the code. The city representative on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees has a term that expires in December of 2018, so at that time, the representative would be eligible for reappointment by the city council. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, I see Mark has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristin, a quick question, which you may have answered at the very end there. If we adopt the recommendation here and make these changes, is there anybody on either of the two boards who, because of the length of their already existing service, would, we'd sort of say, sorry, even if you're interested in going again, you can't? In other words, they're past the six years, or does basically the clock start when we adopt the new ordinance?
The clock would start when you adopted the new ordinance, so basically, from the date that they are reappointed, they would be eligible for six more years of service.
Regardless of how many years they've already served?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that sort of gives the benefit of the doubt.
Okay, is that it? Is that all? Okay. Ron?
Thanks, Matt. Kristin, it says in here, the terms of office shall be three years, we'll commence on July 1st and end on June 30th. But on an earlier slide, you said that the term, the museum board, is two years. Do they have the option, do they automatically go to three years if we adopt this, then?
So what we would do is, it's three years in our code unless otherwise specified. So in the case of the museum board, we would continue to follow the museum's bylaws, so we would stay on that two-year cycle.
But they'd have a six-year limit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Cameron, any questions? Okay. So I had a couple of questions. The first is, or maybe the only one, is... The first is, or maybe the only one, is how are appointing these people then affects their budget and their financial matters? In other words, do we somehow either take on responsibility for that? Never mind, they may be the ones who are voting on it? Or is it just kept totally separate? Is there any, you know, I don't know, Greg, if there's any precedent on that or legal matter with that?
Well, there wouldn't be any. This does not commit the council to any financial support for any of the outside nonprofits or outside organizations. And it's basically just setting a mechanism for you to appoint that is just was absent from our code before. So it's really, in a lot of ways, a cleanup, just to make sure we have -- we're not neglecting to appoint people that on a schedule, on a regular basis. And I think the term limits is important, because six years of consecutive service, then there can be a gap, and they can serve on a commission again. So it's pretty flexible the way we set it up.
So especially with the museum, it seems like it was some kind of oversight that this has been functioning the way it has, and not as a commission? Because as far as the mosquito abatement district, we've always appointed that person, but not the history museum.
That's correct. It was oversight that the council wasn't continuing to make those appointments. Somewhere along the lines, about 10 years ago, something got lost in the shuffle, and the appointment process stopped from the council. And we've resumed that, and obviously, since that time, you've put term limits in place for council appointments. And so we thought, when we were looking at that, hey, you know, these outside appointments, probably in terms of the council appointing process, should work the same as the other council appointments to commissions. So that's what we're proposing here. The museum board, for example, would have the flexibility, let's say, the board really liked the person that had been appointed by the city, and that person had served their six years and was now -- we were appointing somebody new in their place. The museum board could always elect to expand their board and appoint them back to the board themselves, because it's their board. It's just the city's appointment would operate on term limits. So you'd be appointing somebody else. But the board itself, because they're a separate entity, could do other things that a commission couldn't.
Again, I want to make sure, from what Greg is saying, because we are acting by appointing, we're acting as a parent organization, it seems. So let's -- now that -- I'm going to pick on the museum board, because I think the district gets their funding differently. But if the museum board did something, voted on something, and, you know, bankrupted the organization, do we have responsibility to pay the tab because we're the parent organization?
No, we do not. Just like any other nonprofit that someone appoints or volunteers for, the people on the board don't have personal liability, and just because we are the person or entity, excuse me, charged with appointing, we don't have any liability as a city. It's just a mechanism to fill the board and get input from the city side of it.
Okay. All right. I guess we are at the point where we might make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number?
1522.
1522?
Correct.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24, commissions to include the Museum of San Carlos History Board of Directors and the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees.
My second?
Discussion? None? I'm -- I just have a comment. I'm going to go ahead and vote for this, but one of the things I'm troubled with, mostly with the -- not with the history museum, but with the mosquito abatement district, I've always felt as though organizations like that, like the abatement district, where they have a board, those people should be elected by the people directly, not appointed by us. And I think there's other things that happen in San Mateo County where we use that same model, where people get appointed, for instance, the SAMTrans board, that I think ought not to be that way, because they deal with the public's money in a very direct way. They're spending the public's money, and the public has no direct way of holding them accountable for how they spend the public's money. You know, somebody can serve, a council member can serve on one of these boards, make decisions, and when they run for election, nobody thinks of what they did on the, you know, this or that board, because they just think of them as their council member. And then people who live in other communities, who may -- maybe they don't care for how they acted on the SAMTrans board, for instance, but they have no real means to, you know, remove that person from the board by removing them from their council seat, or the county board of supervisors' seat, or whatever. I just don't think it's really the way our government really was intended to operate, and yet somehow we've fallen into that model, and we seem to use it a lot. And I think it's actually an abuse of the agreement we have with the government and how we have our government organized, which is supposed to be a republic, which means people get to elect those who spend the public's money. So -- but I don't think there's going to be any huge changes, because I said that tonight, but I just wanted to get that out, and we'll move on with voting.
May I comment?
Yes, certainly.
I'm smiling, because you will probably be surprised, Mr. Mayor, here we say that. I actually agree with a lot of what you just said. For my own case, it's always bothered me, for example, when I've served on -- and I don't mean to poke fingers at these people, because they're just trying to do a good job, as am I when I'm there. But for example, even like the CCGA board. Okay? I mean, it actually distributes money. And -- but for me, one of the other factors, I don't have an alternative solution, and part of the problem, I think, is, unlike in most of the other counties, San Mateo County has 23, 24 different governmental agencies. 23 cities and a county, whereas most other places have a few cities and a county. And that necessitates all of these indirect structures. But it opens the problem that you talk about, which I agree with you is a problem.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gocott?
Yes. Okay, I think that brings us to Item 8C, which is consideration of adopting a resolution approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group.
Good evening. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of the salary -- of the approval of the confidential salary and benefit resolution. The confidential group is an unrepresented unit and consists of seven full-time employees. This resolution is a two-year resolution, beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2019. The fiscal impact of $18,475 in the coming year has already been factored into the budget you approved at the last meeting. It includes cost of living adjustments of 2% in the first year and 2% in the second year. The group has decided to no longer contribute into their VIBA accounts, so will be eliminating that benefit. There was no cost to the city in any case. We've also eliminated the vacation cap, so that employees who accrue over their allowable limit will be paid out in October. This is the same benefit all the other units have. And a commuter benefit, that employees can use pre-tax income toward qualifying expenses, and then the city will contribute up to $225 per year per employee. So that's a summary of the components of this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, I guess we'll go on to --
Mr. Mayor? I move to adopt Resolution 2017-?
66.
66. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the vote.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gocott?
Yes. Okay, I think that brings us then to council communications and announcements. So do any council members have things to announce? Ron?
I got a couple. Just a reminder to everybody, the -- there is going to be a groundbreaking ceremony on July 21st, which is a Friday, it's a week from Friday, at the Millbrae Caltrain Station for the electrification project, since the funding came through. And it's going to be, I believe, at 10 o'clock. And I went to the -- the Caltrain Electrification Task Force meets every month, and every other month, high-speed rail shows up. Same people that were here at the last meeting were there, and we had a good discussion, and I reminded all the representatives of the other cities that it would be in their best interest to have the high-speed rail representatives come to their city and make the same representations, or the same presentation. And then finally, as you know, I sit on several housing committees, and recently, we had an update from our -- two of our assemblymen, Mark Berman from the southern part of the county, northern Santa Clara County, Rich Gordon's old seat, and Kevin Mullin. They came to the Department of Housing and gave us an update on the efforts to get the governor to pay more attention to the affordable housing needs in Sacramento, which continues to be a challenge. And there were a couple county supervisors, a couple council members, and several members of county housing department. And it was a good meeting, and highlighted, though, the frustrations of getting the governor to be more engaged in the process. That is something he needs to realize, that his big thing is transportation, and we're trying to get him to understand that jobs, housing, and transportation are all connected. But anyway, it was a good meeting, and we're hoping that we'll finally start to make some progress.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to report? Mark? Going once, going twice? There you go.
Sold!
Cameron?
No.
No? Okay. I just had one thing I wanted to bring up to the council and see if they're interested. For a while back, a couple months, we had a rash of complaints from citizens who had gotten these tickets for license plates that were, you know, mangled or whatever. And I just thought it might be a good thing to have, I think it's Sergeant Pettit, is Steve, come and do a presentation, or someone from the sheriff's department, on what exactly that means. Because one of the things that people were -- that got the tickets were shocked by was that they got the tickets, because they thought, "There's nothing wrong with my plate. It's a little old, but maybe it's peeling," or whatever. But I just thought, if he could come and give some examples and do a little presentation, that might be helpful, especially just to kind of get it on the record and have it be on the city's website, that people can view that and understand why they got tickets, or if they, you know, it might move people to go and look at their license plate and realize, "Oh, gosh, mine's in bad shape. I should get this taken care of before I get a ticket for it."
Sounds like a good idea. I mean, I like the idea.
Okay.
I like it, too.
All right. So Jeff, can we have that done?
We'll have that agendized for later this year.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. How about staff? They will move on to their --
Nothing from us this evening.
You sure? It's not even 7:45, but we're adjourned.
All right. Wait till Bob here.